Chair Patel, we are ready to begin.
Thank you. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Planning Commission this Tuesday evening, February 11th. I now call this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ashley, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Chair Patel?
Here.
Vice Chair Nugent?
Here.
Commissioner Ebner?
Here.
Commissioner Clafter?
Here.
And Commissioner Williams is absent.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome. We are excited to be here in person with options for virtual participation. For those attending in person, complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the clerk. If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. And finally, we welcome speakers providing public comment, but please be advised, this is a limited public forum. As such, speakers must stay on topic if speaking to a particular agenda item. If speakers fail to follow these rules, they will be warned and if they continue to disregard our rules, their opportunity to speak will be ended. The first item on our agenda is public comment. This is for members of the public wishing to comment on an item that is not on the agenda. If you are attending in person and have a speaker slip, please turn it in now and remote attendees, please raise your hand.
Chair Patel, we have no public commentators at this time?
Great, then we will go ahead and close the general public comment. The first, the second item on our agenda is zoning code amendments, implementation of the housing element policies and general plan ballot measure T. So we will start with the staff presentation and move to public comments. Members of the public are given two to three minutes to speak depending on the number of speakers. Once the public hearing is closed, the chair may ask staff to respond to any public comments and the commission will ask clarifying questions, deliberate and render a recommendation to the city council.
Good evening, Honorable Chair and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Manira Sandhir. I'm the planning manager and will be presenting on this item tonight. I am also joined over Zoom by Steve Golden. He's the principal planner and project manager for this project and will be available to answer questions. And I also want to acknowledge Assistant Planner Al Caro, who helped with a lot of research on this effort as well. So the zoning code amendments before you tonight stem from the San Mateo Housing Element, which was adopted in May by the city council and certified by the state Housing and Community Development Department in July. One second while we make sure it's also showing up on Zoom.
Through the chair, I noticed that we didn't approve the minutes of the previous meeting. It's not on the agenda tonight. Is that not a requirement this evening?
Through the chair, there are no minutes on this meeting's agenda.
Okay, great.
All right, we have the technical issue resolved and now hopefully viewers on Zoom can also see the presentation. So as I mentioned, the city's housing element for 2023 to 2031 was adopted by city council in May and certified by HCD in July of 2024. The main goals within the housing element were to support production, preservation, protection, and promotion of all types of housing in the city and also to affirmatively further fair housing goals within the city. The housing element included 53 policies and 150 implementation actions. And a number of these policies and implementation actions require zoning code amendments. One of the policies in the housing element policy H1.20 also addressed general plan implementation and measure T, which was a ballot measure last November that I will touch upon in subsequent slides. So the council adopted general plan 2040 in March 2024, which created capacity as identified in policy H1.20 of at least 10,000 new housing units, an increase of base densities in the 10 study areas by at least 25 dwelling units per acre, and increasing height limits by at least two stories. And the general plan was effectuated by the passage of measure T by the voters in November of 2024 to allow for these increased heights and densities. The subbullets on this slide, this slide actually show that through that implementation of measure T and passage of measure T, the increased capacity was actually much higher than what policy H1.20 had envisioned by creating the potential for 19,760 units citywide, increasing the base densities in the study areas by 50 to 80 dwelling units per acre, and increasing the height limits by up to three stories. As part of the housing element implementation, while staff was working towards adoption and certification by the state, there were some policies that staff proactively worked on and got completed in 2023 as well as 2024. So I just want to touch upon that a little bit. The first one was tied to implementation of policy H1.6 to allow for residential projects with up to 25 units to be approved at the zoning administrator level and not require public hearings. The city also adopted objective design standards for multifamily residential projects and mixed-use projects. And last year, the city established a buy right designation for housing sites that were used that would allow for ministerial approval when projects met certain affordability standards. The current bundle of zoning code amendments that are before you tonight are going to continue and build upon that effort and would further implement the housing element policies that we have and further the city state law compliance. And then there are a couple of other aspects to these code amendments focused on council direction to evaluate whether the administrative approvals could be increased from even beyond the 25 units that were adopted in November of 2023. And then the third aspect is to implement the general plan and for measure T consistency. So the first two buckets here identified on the slide are the code amendments that are proposed as part of attachment one to your staff packet and the general plan and measure T consistency is the ordinance that's attached attachment two with the packet. So covering the first one, and this is our biggest bundle in terms of the changes that are proposed. So these are policy changes and you know, here on the slide, we have listed the policy from the housing element, but also identified where some of the changes are driven by state law and government code sections. These, these proposed changes would allow for residential uses as a permitted use in commercial and office districts. We are re-proposing amendments that would define single room occupancy and identify areas in which those would be allowed, eliminate the need for special use permits when multifamily housing is proposed in mixed-use zoning districts, and also clarify standards for manufactured homes to be the same as single-family homes and remove any prohibition of accessory dwelling units in zoning district as a permitted use. And this is something that the city has already been implementing. It's just code cleanups to make sure that we are consistent with the state requirements. To continue on this first, you know, aspect of the code amendments, we're also proposing clarifications and changes to the definitions to make sure our different housing types are aligned with state definitions, looking at group homes and residential care facilities, farmworker housing, emergency shelter definitions, as well as supportive housing and low-barrier navigation centers. So the changes proposed throughout are based on a review of state law and also on best practices. The second bundle of code amendments, or actually, this is just the one code amendment, is tied to the council direction that was provided when the objective design standards were adopted and the zoning administrator approval threshold was increased to 25. At that point, council suggested that we evaluate if the threshold could be higher. We researched and you know, the next couple of slides will share some of that research. But based on that research of other cities and our, the type of housing projects that have applied to the city, the staff is proposing that the planning commission recommend and the council consider increasing the threshold to 50 units, which would then allow for the planning commission's approval authority to extend to projects that are 51 units or more when those projects meet objective design standards. To show some of the background research that helped us develop that recommendation, we did look at other cities. We looked at, it looks like 20, we looked at 15 cities is my understanding, and some of them have thresholds that are closer to the 25 units, but there were two cities that allowed for 50 and even 150 units when projects met objective design standards. In addition, if you look at projects in the city, there are about 25% that have been at the 50 or below level, but then there also have been a lot of projects that have been above that level. So if projects were to meet objective design standards for, for that type of typology, we expect that they would be in the four to six stories in height range and would have to meet the objective design standards to qualify for that administrative approval. All right, the, the third bucket of changes that we are recommending tonight are tied to the general plan 2040 consistency, and this is the attachment two, which proposes to update existing sections of the zoning code to implement measure T and allow for general plan consistency. These amendments would allow for incorporating the uses, densities, intensities, and heights that are specified in the land use element in table LU-1 of the general plan, especially where they may be conflicts with the existing zoning code. As you all know, we are about to embark on a comprehensive zoning code update process, but that would take us a couple of years and we would do it in phases. So we don't currently have standards in place for some of the new land use designations that were created. So the intent of these code amendments is to rely on the general plan for, for the specifics that are outlined in this table. And these proposed amendments would also conform to provisions of the State Housing Crisis Act. Moving, looking at the future, we are, we would be coming back with additional zoning code amendments that would further implement our housing element specifically tied to policy H1.7 to amend the code to look at our floor area ratio requirements and standards, to look at our parking code standards, and then policy H1.9 to evaluate setting minimum densities in mixed-use zoning districts. And then in addition to that, and while not a, not possibly a zoning code amendment, we may also be looking at our inclusionary policies under policy H1.3 of the housing element to provide for alternative compliance options. So those are some of the items that staff are working on currently, but those will be scheduled at a later date. So for tonight's proposed amendments, staff recommends categorical exemption per SEQA guideline, section 15183, as the project is consistent with the general plan. And the general plan had an environmental impact report that was certified by the city council. Staff wants to note that because a lot of these policy items were, compliance with state law were already clearly identified in the housing element, staff sent out public notices through the newspaper, through the planning e-newsletter, and an email group, as well as had a website so that the community could review these changes. No public comments have been received as of an hour ago. So we will see how this goes at council. With that, staff recommends that the planning commission recommend to the city council that the ordinances are exempt from further environmental review under section 15183. Recommend the, the city council adopt an ordinance to implement the housing element as well as adopt an ordinance to amend existing sections of the zoning code for implementation of measure T and general plan consistency. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Manira. We'll move on to public comment on this agenda item. If there are any members of the public who wish to comment on this agenda item and are in person, please turn in your speaker slips now. If you are watching remotely, please raise your hand now.
Chair Patel, we have one in-person speaker and it looks like we don't have any speakers on Zoom.
Okay, great.
So the timer's going to be three minutes?
Hello, Planning Commission. My name is Cara Cox. I used to be on Public Works. I used to live in San Mateo. I was born in San Mateo, currently live in the East Bay because like a lot of people that I grew up with, we have been pushed out of San Mateo because it is no longer a middle-class affordable city to live. So I appreciate any amendments that help us get built homes, but I also just wanted to point out a couple other concerns. I am a real estate agent. When people are able to put together money, I can help them find homes, hopefully. But you know, in the, in the application of the multifamily of the 2,500 units that have been approved, they all haven't been built. What is taking so long? The other major concern that I have is that so much of this multifamily is being approved for rent. Building another building so Essex can suck up money from the community and send it to Wall Street is not going to be beneficial, even if they are headquartered here. In terms of what sold, I did, ran the numbers. There were less than 500 single-family homes sold in San Mateo in 2024, and there were only 223 condos. We do not have condos. We do not have a ladder for the community. We do not have ways to people to get entrenched in the community, to join commissions, to be invested in their homes and to be committed to the area because they're scrambling to make rent. I have a good friend who's worked her whole life. She bought a home in 2012 in Hayward for $225,000, if you can believe that. She works at Trader Joe's over at 92 with her husband. They got in a community program. But she works with some woman in her 60s. She cannot retire because they keep raising her rent in San Mateo. So it is not just enough to build multifamily. We need to build condos. We need to create ownership in the community. We need to create residents that can reach people in a meaningful way. And all the condos, by the way, in San Mateo are so old, you can't have laundry in the unit, which does not help families at all. And another thing, I mean, I noticed the slide. You said your guidelines in Pleasanton. Oh, that's great. You know, review up to 50 units. So I looked on my MLS listing. They only sold 38 condos in Pleasanton all last year, so let's not use them as a model. There's only nine available on the market. So they may say they approve them, but they're not building them. It takes both things. In contrast, Walnut Creek is 75,000 people. They sold 675 condos last year. That's almost three times as many as San Mateo. I just don't think it's ruining people like Walnut Creek. They have a vibrant downtown because they have buildings where people can walk there. So yes, I'm happy that we're getting in the right direction, but it's taking too long and it's not reaching the people who need help. When I go to open houses, when I drop my kids off at my mom's, I go to the open houses. There are some gorgeous homes now, people, but they're $3 million. They're $4.7 million home up near Safeway and it's gorgeous. It's a work of art. But that is not accessible housing. It is 4,000 square feet for one family. That is changing the community in a terrible, terrible way. Please keep approving things and don't listen to the people bar complaining about parking.
Thank you.
Chair Patel, we have no more public commentators.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. We'll go ahead and close the public comment for this agenda item. Next, do we have any clarifying questions for staff, looking at my fellow commissioners?
Through the chair.
Yes.
This is a, this is a question that actually came up in my mind during the presentation. So I apologize if, if this is not something that you're prepared for, but the question I had is, is at the mid-rise height level of 50-unit building, what would approximately be the square footage of the footprint? Like, how, how big of a lot are we looking at? I did really rough back of the envelope numbers for myself and I came up with about 15,000 foot, square foot of lot space. Is that, is that in a general, general realm of, you know, the possibility for that size? I'm just trying to grasp how much of, say, a block we're talking about for 50, 50 units?
Through the chair, I can start the response and I'm hoping Steve Golden, our principal planner, can chime in as well. I think it really depends sometimes on the size of the units because you can have 50 units that could be 50 studios or one bedrooms versus 50 units that are family scale housing. So again, it can really vary in terms of the typology of the units themselves. But Steve, I mean, I generally think your numbers sound right. I haven't personally done that calculation, but Steve, do you have anything else to add to that?
Well, I'd just say under our new general plan, where we have a lot of densities set at 50 to 100 units per acre, that if you do the math, then you're anywhere between, you know, half and a full acre to get those, to get those types of buildings and, and units and those parcel sizes.
Okay, so about a half to a full acre. Okay, so on, my calculations was 15,000, which is probably on the low end. That would be like a five-story building maxed out floor FAR in like small units. So, so probably like 20, 20,000 to 40,000 square feet of lot space for that kind of building at like five stories or less.
Through, through the chair, I think there could be a wide range in terms of lot size because I know also we've got a recent, recent application that is focused on condos and townhomes and that's a density of closer to 20 to 25 units an acre. So in theory, then you could have an acre and a half or maybe almost two acres. So I think there's a lot of variability. We're just looking at the unit count as the threshold, but yeah, you could probably have maybe a quarter acre, all the way up to maybe acre and a half, two acres, just depending on where it's located and the underlying density.
Okay, thank you. That's extremely helpful.
Through the chair. I don't think this actually applies to the overall discussion this evening, but it's been something that I've been thinking about lately and it has, it has to do with no net loss. So are the net losses, do they, do they go into the different price ranges? Or is it just the unit count completely? For instance, if you had a building that was proposed to be 600 units and 300 or 30 of them were supposed to be very low income in the projection on the, for the housing element, but you only built 15, is that a net loss? Do they track them that, do you track them that way? Or is it the overall count that is built on site?
Through the chair, I don't think the code amendments are affected by the no net loss provisions. That's tied to the RENA implementation and tracking of the RENA numbers, the regional housing needs allocation and what was allocated to individual sites. So that question comes up when there is a rezoning proposed or a project application proposed. So in this case, this, that conversation would occur at a stage of a project that was proposing not to comply with like the RENA allocations for a site. And, and yes, if the city was to approve a project like that, the city would have to show where equivalent housing could be developed elsewhere in the city to make up for the, that net loss of the affordable housing on that one site. But again, it's not germane to the discussion today as it's the, the amendments are not okay.
Okay, thank you. I know it wasn't part of tonight's discussion, but I wanted to ask it. Thank you for giving me the information. I do have a couple of other quick questions. So the additional housing policies and programs that require zone code amendments that will come to the, to the discussion or to the commission later, one of them says, it says, "Update the inclusionary housing policy to include alternative compliance options to the city's current onsite inclusionary." What does that mean?
So through the chair, the city currently has an inclusionary requirement that 16% of the, of any proposed development over 11 units has to be affordable. And the state law requires that you have to provide an alternative compliance option in terms of either providing units onsite with that development or some other mechanism of providing for those affordable units. And that's what the city is currently exploring. We're doing some research into what other cities have done, what are the best practices, what is feasible and can be implemented, and those, that'll follow in a, in a subsequent meeting.
So we currently don't have an alternative process to do?
That would be my understanding, but I haven't.
Offsite, okay, okay. So the measure T initiative or ordinance has the ability or apparently has the ability to expand our housing, available housing units to almost 30,000 units, correct?
That is correct.
And does the SEQA cover 20 or 30,000?
So the 10,000 capacity was already existing under general plan 2030, Commissioner Ebner, and the 20,000 is the additional that is created with the passage of measure T. So the environmental impact report that was prepared was to cover the 20,000 additional.
Oh, it was? Okay, good. Great. I, I couldn't tell reading the documentations if it did actually extend to it.
Through the chair, just to, and build on that a little bit more, the general plan studied increase of up to approximately 19,760 units through 2040. That's not just additional capacity added. That's just an estimate of what could be developed over the lifespan of the general plan. So there's an important differentiation. There's just added capacity. So if you go from 50 units, say, an acre to 100 units an acre, you're adding 50 units of capacity. So if you look at the rezonings around the city, so there's a little bit of, they're not direct comparisons because the general plan did a study and said, okay, looking at the changes in land use and then various factors, there's, there's potential for that 19,700 change to be built through 2040. There's a capacity beyond that, but we know not every site will redevelop. Some sites are already developed and, and won't see a change. And so that, that's where it's not a direct comparison. The numbers outlined in the general plan versus the, the regional housing needs allocation and sites inventory.
So the, the SEQA covers the 19,000 something for the general plan?
Yeah. So between now and 2040, up to 19,700 units of new, new residential development would be covered under the general plan for the, or the EIR for the general plan. If it goes beyond that, then there would need to be supplemental work.
Okay, you could use supplemental. You wouldn't have to go site by site.
So looking just purely at the sites inventory, 10,000 units of capacity was added through the adoption of the general plan.
Right.
That's pure capacity. That's looking at the sites and saying, with the increased density that was added, a capacity of, for 10,000 more units was added to our sites inventory.
Okay, so the other 10,000 are not, are not technically under the SEQA for the, for the general plan? Because you're, you're saying we have capacity for 30,000.
That's where I'm saying there's, there's not a direct comparison here. Where the EIR covered development of up to that 19,000 units through 2040. There's also just capacity, pure capacity that gets added when you upzone a site.
Okay. That's all my questions for now. That's all my questions for now.
Commissioner Glafter, do you have any questions?
Yes, through the chair. I was actually looking at that, the administrative approval threshold, and I was just curious about the, the study that was done, the 23 jurisdictions that were queried, and I was curious if, that, sorry, that responded, and I was curious how many were contacted that, you know, in total, perhaps?
Through the chair, I'm not sure how many were counted. This was an effort that was done a while ago, but checking with Steve if he has the number at the top of his-
I thought it was in the staff report. Hold on.
Okay, let me check.
Through the chair, I don't know exactly how many cities we contacted. I think we got 23 to respond to our, to our request, but I don't know how many were initially contacted.
Yes, through the chair, we don't have that data. We had insurance reach out to individual cities, and this was almost, at least nine months ago that we had started that research.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, I was just, I was just curious about that, because obviously, this is, you know, 23 is a, there are many, many cities which, you know, would not be included if they didn't respond. So I was just curious if there was a wider net cast, what the, what the numbers might have looked like.
Any other questions?
I have a couple of questions. So for the administrative approval threshold, projects that were approved at the administrative level, they could still be appealed to the planning commission, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And then I have one very tactical question. So I was looking at Attachment 3 and Policy H.15, which I believe is on the third page? One, two, three, yes, on the third page. It says, "The Implementation Action is amend the zoning code to allow mobile home parks as a special use in all residential zones to be consistent with Government Code Section 6582.7." But then I noticed that the actual implementation is to allow it via a special use permit in the R2 district, and then uses in the R2 district are allowed in R3, R4, et cetera. What about R1? And I'm asking just because the Implementation Action says all residential zones, so I just wanted to double-check on that.
Through the chair, I'll turn that question over to Steve.
Thank you, Manera. Through the chair, well, to the chair. Yeah, we did investigate that, and looking at what mobile home parks, you know, what they are, multifamily types of dwelling, which don't really, aren't very consistent with our R1 district standards, so placing it in all multifamily housing districts is what we interpreted the, the state law to, to allow for. So that's what we did with our zoning code amendments. It's true that R2 is enumerated in R3 and up the ladder, it's all enumerated, so we put it in all of our multifamily districts.
Okay, thank you. That, that was what I was curious, was specifically what the state law requires and whether we were adhering to whatever the state law requires. So if, if you looked at it and then our implementation is consistent, that's great. That's just what I wanted to double-check. Okay, those were my only questions. So I'm looking to my fellow commissioners, is there anything about any of these recommended changes that we want to discuss? Say, for example, the administrative approval threshold?
Yes, through the, through the chair, I do, I do want to discuss the administrative approval threshold. So I found that our sole public commenter's comment was fairly serendipitous for what I was hoping to propose to the commission, because I also agree that it is extremely vital to encourage building of more homes, especially those that provide ownership opportunities in San Mateo. And looking at, you know, the 150-unit threshold in Pleasanton, I would like to recommend to the city council that we would say, yes, projects up to 50 units that comply with the ODS should be approved at the administrative level. But I also want to suggest that we also include projects up to 200 units that are within certain study areas, so that, those would be the study areas that are within the 5.5-mile radius of our train station. So the study areas four, three, one, and five. I would like to recommend that we increase that administrative level approval to 200 units for projects that provide ownership opportunities. So condominiums, townhomes.
Are those separate conditions or the same conditions? Are you saying 200 units within half a mile that are also ownership? Or within a half a mile, it could be 200 units, or it could be ownership? It doesn't necessarily have to be both?
I'm open to, I'm open to discussion on that. I do think that it's important to provide an incentive to creating condominium units, especially, I mean, condominium units can be rented out by the condominium owner. It's not like it's removing potential, potential for, for rentals in the future, but it, it is one of those things that we have a dearth of here in San Mateo, where I'm sure there's a pretty strong market for. And this seems like a pretty simple way to just make it slightly easier to do, just, just by making a lot of different types of projects that are within those study areas, which is less, less friction to getting approved in the future.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
What, was there anything that led you to propose those specific numbers? 150 units overall, or 200 units, whether it's within a half mile of a train station, or whether it's ownership? What made you pick 150 and 200?
150 was the, the called-out-for Fairfield, which is, so there's precedent there. Again, these numbers are probably open to discussion, so I'm just trying to provide some sort of starting point, if we want. Again, I, I wholeheartedly agree with the council's push to do the 50 units. I just would like to see if we can also encourage home building in the places that we want it the most, and to encourage condominium and ownership opportunities in the city, in the places we want home building the most. And this just seems like one of those possible, possible ways to make it a little bit quicker.
So I like the idea of increasing the size units for, to be ministerially approved. And I'm not-
I was just saying, it's administratively approved, it's not ministerial approval.
Administratively approved. And I'm not solely convinced, or completely convinced, that the solution to our housing crunch is ownership, yet it is a mechanism that we can encourage, but I don't think it solves our deepest problems. We are still feeding into the same type of system, which has excluded a lot of people, and it will still have exclusionary purposes, implicit or not. But I do like the idea of expanding the approval and making it an easier process overall.
Yeah, through, through the chair. I, I agree, I like, I like 50 better than the current 25. I think the idea of an even higher number within that 0.5 radius is also very interesting. I think my question earlier was sort of, you know, kind of, I was looking at this report and just saying, okay, you know, those numbers are sort of being based on a very, very small study. I don't necessarily know that maybe, maybe 50 is, maybe 50 is low, maybe 50 is high, maybe 200 is high or low, because it's based on a very small, you know, survey amount, just because of the number, you know, based on the number of cities that responded, but... Yeah, I also agree with Commissioner Ebner that the question of rent or own, you know, if we're starting to impose a condition like that, that might discourage someone from a potential project, because the economics may say, hey, they may dictate, hey, you need, this needs to be a rental property versus condos.
I'm, I have similar concerns about the incentive for the ownership, just because I don't feel like I have enough of a grasp on economics to understand what that might do. When it, when it comes to the increasing the threshold, I'm going to pose a question to the rest of you, which is, why have a threshold? And I say that because we created these objective design standards to streamline housing development. And so there's a part of me, I'm struggling with the number. Is it 50? Is it 150? Is it 200? What is the risk of, what is the risk of, of not having a threshold? What is the problem that we're trying to solve for by having a threshold at all? Because to, to some degree, it feels like if it meets the objective design standards, then we've already decided as a city that, that the project should move forward. So why have a threshold? And as long as there's a mechanism, which is why I asked for an appeal to the planning commission, if there's any concerns or disagreements or issues, then why have a threshold?
I, I wrote a note while I was looking at everything about that very subject. I said, well, you know, the, the whole point of objective design standards is that it's going to be applied consistently and impartially, and it's going to be grading everything on exactly the same set of criteria, and if you're introducing us into the mix, then it becomes, you know, less impartial, perhaps, and that seems contrary to the whole point of it.
So in terms of why have a threshold at all, I'll tell you personally, if it was just all up to me, I'd say, no, we wouldn't have a threshold, because any project that uses the objective design standards would be covered by state housing law that would basically make it very difficult for the, for us to reject it anyway. So why include one additional step? The, the counter that I have in my mind is that, I don't know if that's politically feasible from just an optics standpoint, from the council being able to, to pass that. So if they were, if they were willing to do that, and I could confidently say that that would be something that the council would listen to and, and pass, I would, I would recommend just removing any threshold and having anything that, that follows the objective design standards and our zoning codes be approved at the administrative level. I don't know, I just don't, I didn't, I don't imagine that. I feel like once you get to, you know, 300 units or something like that, that feels really large to just like, people on the street, and they're like, well, why didn't I know about this? And that sort of thing, and having the, having, moving away from this process could potentially backfire? I don't know.
That's a great question. So I'm going to ask staff another question, which is, for administrative approval, is there still a public notice and a neighborhood meeting that is required?
There is a neighborhood meeting prior to submittal that would be required. That's our early outreach process that the planning commission recommended changes to, and the council adopted via resolution. There would also be legally, legal noticing required prior to a decision that is reached by the zoning administrator at the administrative level. However, there is no public hearing, and there's no opportunity for the public to come and speak and provide-
Aside from the neighborhood meeting?
Correct, aside from the neighborhood meeting, which is early stages of the project before an application is even submitted.
So I'm going to respond to something you said, which is, you weren't sure that having no threshold would be politically feasible. And I, I feel like this question of political feasibility came up once or twice when we were discussing the housing element in the general plan. And the general direction, I think at the time, was, it is not for planning commission to determine political feasibility. That is a question for council. I think our role is to make recommendations to the council about what we think makes the most sense from a land use standpoint. And so I think, based on what you've just said and what we've just discussed, to me, it feels like the, the, the risk of, of not having a threshold is the elimination of the public hearing. And that is kind of the deciding point, is, is there a point in which a project is so large that we think there should be a public hearing, aside from the neighborhood meeting?
So through the chair, I was thinking on the same line as Adam on my right, because for the, and noted, the political discussions aren't what, aren't why we are here. Yet the, the practicality is, if all of a sudden there's a notification in the, in the Daily Journal that a developer can build a 500-unit complex with just one meeting, is going to bring down a lot of fury to the city hall. Not to you and I, but to city hall. And it just, to me, probably would not be feasible. I think if the city wants to, in the future, elevate the sizes to see if 200 would be feasible, and then you look at it in another year and a half and you go, okay, well, why don't we go to 400? And not immediately take all controls off and say, this is what you're going to get, and this is why. Again, it's not a political decision for me to make, but I think it's a practical discussion.
With regard to this, I have a question for staff. Could the planning commission provide the city council with three alternative recommendations as far as this is concerned? Like, we say, yes, we want, we definitely approve and recommend a 50-unit threshold, but we would like you to consider B and C as well? Would that be an acceptable thing to present, for staff to present to the, to the council? So they have three options, basically, and they can weigh, do we stick with the 50 units that we had versus, you know, a middle ground versus no threshold?
Through the chair, yeah, as the planning commission, you have prerogative, this is a recommendation, so whatever you feel is what you would like to recommend. I would suggest, just for something to keep in mind, too many options might create a challenge to the recommendation, so I would suggest if you wanted to go with the option of the recommendation on the ordinances before you, and then include a supplemental recommendation for their consideration on a specific item, that makes a lot of sense, and it's totally within your prerogative. But if there's multiple facets to it, it might be more challenging for them to consider.
Okay, thank you. That's extremely helpful. Here's, based on our discussion, here's what I would like to preliminarily propose, and give council three options. It's, yes, we, assuming, like, we wholeheartedly agree with their proposal to do 50 units. And then we also would like them to consider, for any objective design standard projects, having no threshold. And then as kind of a intermediate choice, having a threshold of 150 units within a half-mile radius of the Caltrain. And perhaps, as, as an incentive for them for that, have, have some- And perhaps as an incentive for them for that, have something tied with condominium moves or some sort of working that into there.
Through the chair, may I interject and say that we, staff hasn't studied your proposal about the location of the study areas or within a half a mile of transit to see whether they would interfere or go afoul of any state housing laws. So I'm curious if you want staff to do that research and for that recommendation, or if, at this point, you want to narrow your recommendation per the director's suggestion.
What would be involved in that? Again, I'm still looking to see what would, something that we can get the council to actually agree on and like.
Through the chair, I think a recommendation, I mean, similar to the action that was taken the first go around with looking at the administrative approval threshold when it was raised from 6 to 25. I think, keep in mind, the 50 is a staff recommendation. So there's nothing magic about that other than based on what the research was, that's the staff recommendation. But I think if we're going to then start to parse that, there would be an additional study. We're not sure exactly what, looking at state law, other adopted plans. So there would be more work there. And so that's probably something that staff would recommend. We would need to go back and look at and then bring back at some future date. But if you want to make a recommendation for council to consider, they would probably not be able to take action, but if they wanted to, could provide direction to staff.
They would not, through the chair, they would not be able to take action because staff would not be able to give them the information to make that decision. Is that what you're saying?
We would need to look into it further. We're not sure, we don't know what we don't know yet. And so we would need to look into that recommendation if we're going to parse the threshold in that way and make sure that there's no unintended consequences or inconsistencies with adopted plans or state law or other policies that we may need to look at and consider.
I wonder if we could recommend the, recommend the recommendations that have been posed to us. But then also, as Zach said, make a supplemental recommendation where we ask council to consider either not having any threshold or directing staff to investigate an increased threshold within, further increased threshold within a radius of the Caltrain stations. And then it's sort of up to council to decide whether they want to direct staff to do that additional research or whether they just want to not have any threshold at all.
Yeah. I think it's important to know that behind all of this discussion is SB 330, I think. And like, there's not really a way for us to not approve a unit or a development that's consistent with our objective design standards legally. So again, a lot of this is just trying to save staff time and avoid unnecessary tension and conflict, but also ensure that, you know, public still has the ability to voice their opinions and, you know, provide recommendations themselves based on their personal experiences of a site that they maybe live near or something like that.
Yeah, I think that is literally what the threshold gives you, is the ability to have a public hearing and allow the public beyond just the neighborhood that would be noticed by the neighborhood meeting to provide input.
Yeah. Again, the thing that is in the back of my mind with all this is removing this, the extra steps of the Planning Commission, just saves money for the developer and makes projects maybe pencil out a little bit easier. Because there's less risk, there's, you know, less time, less consultant fees involved. And so that, to me, is, you know, it's not going to be a perfect incentive, it's not going to supercharge anything, but it just reduces a little bit of the friction to get something created. And I feel like we are trying to estimate what would be the right balance to ensure that the community, it doesn't feel like they don't have any ability to put, make input versus, you know, practicality and trying to encourage building of things we want in places we want them to be built. So that being said, I think, I think what you said in terms of providing the three options of just get rid of the threshold with the express knowledge that, you know, we can't really disapprove things based on the, you know, their compliance with objective design standards anyways. But I think just having, having a, because another reason why I look at the 150 to 200 range is that's about half of the projects that we've had recently. And so like 50% of the projects, that's, like, if we can get 50% of those projects, like, just a little bit less risk, like, that's amazing.
I have a thought there, through the chair. If, to your point about, you know, being legally required to approve certain projects, if we have an obligation to look at a project in a very specific way and don't really have any wiggle room, and then we have a public meeting and people come and they voice their opinions, and then at the end of it, we say, thank you, but if you don't like it or do like it, it's kind of irrelevant. I think that's probably a very unsatisfying meeting to hold in the first place.
That's very true.
That has been our lived experience, yes.
One thing I do want to mention about ownership units. And again, this is not to say anything bad about rental units because I think all of us have been in the same, in both shoes or have experienced that in our lives at some point, in both ways. It's the, one of the reasons beyond just the fact that, you know, it's important for people to get a foothold into the market is studies have been done recently of who supports new housing and who supports new, you know, walkable urbanism, the stuff that we're trying to encourage within our core areas by our train stations. And it's actually the people who are most, the biggest proponents by far that have, are people who purchase homes in walkable areas because they know that, you know, new residents in those areas are going to provide increased activity, increased businesses development, increased tax money in the places they have chosen to invest in. And so one of the reasons why ownership units being encouraged would actually perhaps supercharge in the long-term units of all types is that the people that will enter into those units in the places that we're talking about are going to be the biggest proponents of more neighbors.
I'm sorry, through the chair, the biggest proponents of?
Of allowing new neighbors in addition to themselves. So like, they're the ones, like, based on studies, they're the ones that are by far the most excited and positive in polls for increased building of residencies around them. The people who choose.
Or not.
Yes, exactly. Exactly.
You know, I mean, I'm not against homeownership.
Yeah, right.
I don't think it's the golden bullet or whatever that's going to solve our housing issues. I do like to have a mix. There's no doubt about it. I think that's important. So, you know, I don't know how we are going to meld that into this discussion this evening specifically. I think it would be a stretch if we were trying to make policy specifically around sale or rental units. I think that's a stretch. I don't think staff would have the time to do that.
I think that's why, if I go back to what I suggested before, that we, we recommend the recommendations that have already been posed to us. But then we make a supplemental recommendation that we ask council to consider not having a threshold at all because that would not require, I don't believe, any further research. We just say, we ask you to consider not having any threshold for the reasons that you mentioned, which are, we're legally obligated to approve projects that meet objective design standards. And so if we're legally obligated to approve them, why not eliminate a step in the process and reduce the friction? But then we also ask staff, or sorry, ask council, to, to consider asking staff to do more research around a location-based or ownership incentives, like a higher threshold to incentivize within certain locations or to incentivize homeownership opportunities. Because what I don't want to have happen is to slow down this zoning amendment process. And it sounds like staff said that looking at a location constraint or looking at an ownership constraint would require more research and that slows this down. So I feel like step one is get, get these recommendations implemented, possibly with no threshold if council is open to that. And then a step two could be investigating, adding incentives around location from train stations or homeownership.
So through the chair, when we make our recommendation tonight, and it goes to City Council, does it go to City Council for two readings? There'll be two readings. So the first one will simply be a study session.
Through the chair, the first will be an introduction to the ordinance.
Just the introduction.
And then there'll be a second reading subsequent to that.
Okay. There's two ordinances. And would the ordinances both be looked at at the same meeting? Do you expect that?
Correct.
Okay. So they do have time with our recommendations. I mean, the council isn't going to make a definitive answer that night.
But then if they do take our recommendations into account and do that research, they would have to reread the ordinances and possibly bring it back to Planning Commission again.
Yes, through the chair, the ordinance adoption process, it's introduction and then a second reading and adoption. The second reading and adoption is on consent. There's no discussion or activity. You would have to reintroduce it if any changes were made, so then that would require a third meeting and depending on the scope, potentially having to send it back to Planning Commission.
So through the chair.
Yes.
Would it be acceptable to, to make the recommendations as staff has presented it, yet just increase it from 50 to 150?
I think we could recommend that. My question to the rest of you is, increasing it to 150, what we want to recommend? Or do we want to recommend considering having no threshold?
I think, I mean, we can recommend anything that we want, yet I think in reality that to not have a threshold isn't something that is going to pass muster with council.
Can I ask staff a question? If we recommend that staff not consider a threshold, or sorry, we recommend council not consider a threshold, at the introduction of the ordinance, could council say, we don't agree with Planning Commission's recommendation, but we as council would be okay increasing it from 50 to 150? Or would that increase then have to restart the process or come back to us?
No. I mean, I think any number, it's on the table and there's a policy choice there. Is it 50? Is it 150? Is there no threshold? And so what you do is say categorically, housing projects are administrative action unless appealed. So yeah, that's the discussion here. So you're making a recommendation. And as long as then there's not further parameters or other aspects introduced, that would be a policy choice that would be within council's prerogative to then take action on for introduction and adoption.
So the main issue would be if we were to ask for a ownership requirement or encouragement? That's, that would be the, what would it be requiring a rewrite?
Or geographic.
Because it would require more research first.
Okay.
I would be, I would be open to recommending 150 just directly to the council and then providing a secondary recommendation of just removing the threshold because of the specific reasons that we've been talking about. And then I think leaving it at that, at those two. And then it's, council can choose whatever number they want at that point.
Through the chair, I guess the question is, which one is, which one is our A and which one is our B? Is A no threshold or is it, is it 150 or 50 or?
So I'm going to posit this. I do think that a no threshold at this stage is probably not politically feasible. I'm happy to be surprised, but I think that providing the threshold at 150 as the A recommendation and then providing the no threshold as B, as, and staff can easily provide the reasons of, like, it's going to have to be approved anyways, it's, everything's appealable anyways, you know, we can't really, I mean, why go through a dog and pony show? Like, it's, I think that that would make sense and that probably would, would allow, allow council to, you know, like, like politically make, make that decision.
Yep.
Yeah.
So I'm hearing is, we recommend as is, but also offer a supplemental recommendation that council consider increasing the threshold to 150 or having no threshold at all?
I'm sorry, I read it the other way. I thought we were going to recommend 150.
Okay.
Get rid of the 50 completely.
Okay.
150 and they give them option B.
I would be okay with that.
As no, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just, sorry. I was just nodding.
Does someone want to make a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we recommend to the City Council that the threshold for administrative approval of housing projects that comply with objective design standards be 150 or alternatively, just removing the threshold.
And through the chair, there are other staff recommendations on the screen. Would you like to fold them into the motion?
And then I would also like to recommend to the City Council the, the rest of the staff recommendations.
So through the chair, we still have time to discuss some of the other policy items? Or are we going right to recommendation?
Oh, I did not realize there were other policy items you wanted to discuss. Yes, please. Let's, let's get, let's discuss the other policy items.
Let's shelve that.
Yeah. Time out on the motion.
So policy H 1.3, which is to, or through the chair, which is to increase affordable housing production. I looked into San Jose's zoning.
Oh, pardon?
Through the chair, I just wanted to know, policy H 1.3 isn't part of the consideration for tonight. That's a future policy item that'll be coming back to the commission.
Really?
Yeah, if you look at attachment three, it says it'll be brought to us in the future.
So I read this incorrectly. Oh, okay. The summary of elemental, summary of housing element implementation actions in zoning code amendments, policy H 1.13 is not part of this?
Oh, 1.13, sorry. We thought you said 1.3.
1.13, sorry.
So that's for the, or update to the special needs group housing requirements?
No. What I'm trying to find is.
Through the, through the chair, yeah. 1.3 is the, is the affordable housing and that one is for a future study session. And 1.13 is special needs group housing requirements.
Okay. So then I will not be discussing this this evening. How about, how about policy H 1.6?
That's what we just discussed, the threshold of administrative approval.
So then I guess I have nothing to discuss at this point.
Okay.
Excellent. Do you want to re-motion, or can we get a second to a motion? Okay.
I'll second the motion.
So did we correct them, did we correct the motion already?
So the motion on the floor is the three bullets listed on the slide with the amendment that the administrative threshold would be for 150 units, with a supplemental recommendation to the City Council that there be no threshold when residential projects meet objective design standards, correct?
Correct.
Great.
Somebody second it?
I, I seconded it.
And for a vote, Chair Patel?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nugent?
Yes.
Commissioner Abner?
Yes.
Commissioner Clafter?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams is absent.
Great, that passes 4-0. So we will close that item. The next item on our agenda is reports and announcements. Do we have any reports and announcements from staff or city attorney?
Yes, I have a few reports and announcements, thank you. The first item is related to the February 28th, is it February 28th? I'm sorry, it might be February 25th meeting. It is February 25th. So our next Planning Commission meeting, we have two items lining up. One is an appeal of a zoning administrator decision associated with the two-unit development. And the other project is going to be a special use permit for a community service use at the former Boys and Girls Club site on Quebec Street. So those are, notices will be going out this week, and staff reports will be published right before the meeting. I want to share that there was a Planning Commission training a couple of weeks ago on new housing legislation, and Commissioner Clafter and myself had attended. And of course, there are a number of housing law changes that have kicked in at the start of this year, associated with EDUs, with SB 9, but primarily with the Housing Accountability Act. And staff is looking at our, our codes, as well as our forms and materials, to make sure that we are implementing those state laws. There is also a training coming up this Thursday evening for the chair and vice chair, and I hope you can both join us. This will be run by the City Clerk's Office. Continuing with the training theme, we also have the Planning Commissioners Academy coming up in March, and I understand four commissioners are signed up to attend, which is great. And our chair will actually be on the panel, so hopefully, Chair Patel, you'll share more about that when we get closer to that event. I also wanted to note that the Planning Division is seeing an uptick in application volume. We did notice that in the second half of 2024, we did not get as many planning applications. And now because of the Measure T passage, we are seeing a number of SB 330 pre-applications come in the door. These projects are being added to the city's what's happening page, so that the community is aware of these, and we are also sharing through our e-newsletters, so that the community stays engaged and understands what's going on. That concludes all of staff's updates.
Great. Do we have any reports and announcements from commissioners? Nope. All right, that concludes our meeting. We'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you.